Get started with our business meeting. Today's date is March 11, 2025. The time is 2:00 P. M. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Okay. A pledge of allegiance. Gaston, could we get you to start, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment. We also will have public comment at the end of the meeting. If anyone would like to speak at the beginning, they're welcome to. Anybody? No? Okay. Hearing none. Did you want to speak? Okay, well, go on up to the podium. Just state your name.
I'm Rochelle Addison, and this is about the LPRs. I definitely see how they can have a lot of benefit for law enforcement, but the trend is that once something's in, it's never going away, and there's almost no way that it couldn't be used against people at some point in the future to track them, to, you know, give out their information to all these different agencies. And so I would hope that you would vote against releasing the funds. I think that's what it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none. We'll move on to meeting minutes. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes, items one through six.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Go ahead and consent calendar.
I move that we approve items seven through nine.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is payables.
I move that we approve the payables from March 3 through the 7, 2025, in the amount of $2,500,012.19, and jury panel payments in the amount of $5,385.51.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Onto business. Item number 11, bid award, bid number 001000. This is actually reject with building and grounds, and we have Director Jeff Fuller here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Fuller for the record. As you know, on February 18, we opened bids for the renovation of the HVAC in this administration building. The project came in, exceeded the budget by over $400,000. I believe that there are some areas that we can cut either through resequencing some of the mechanical equipment that was specced, but also if we look at how we would do the work and not have as much evening and weekend work and have to work around with our staff. And so in order to have open conversations with those contractors, it was recommended that we reject the bid, and then we will look at resequencing it and putting it back out with a different scope of work that would be rebid.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? No? No. Commissioner Everline? No. Do we want a motion for that, or just... Okay. Yep, I'll take a motion.
So I move that we reject bid number 001000 for the building and grounds HVAC project due to it being over budget.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 12, bid opening, request for qualifications, ATCT services, and this is with the airport, and we have Kim Stevenson and then also Gaston Patterson, our director.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Gaston Patterson, Airport Director for the record. Today, you guys will be receiving into the record the request for qualifications. The airport solicited for this on February 7 and February 14. We did two notice dates, so it's been roughly 30 days to receive those. Today, you guys will open them and be right into the record. We just need the company and then the city and state right into the record, where they're from. After that, the airport committee will review the bids and then bring it back to the board for approval based on certain qualifications.
Thank you. Questions?
These are RFQs. Okay, so I actually don't open them at all. I don't need to open them at all.
Yep.
All right, so the first one is from the UPS store. Okay. Advanced ATC, is that a company? And it looks like it came from Prattville, Alabama. Is that... You can see how the tag. Okay. All right. And then this one looks like it's from the same ATC, Prattville, Alabama. We have Tower Tech from Meta Vista, California. And Tower Tech again, Meta Vista, California. So I'm assuming one is for six months, one's for 12 months, and this is why we have two... Ooh, this is a big one. Okay. This one is from Circo, and it does not have the city and state. So would you like me to open that for that, or do you care? Okay. If it doesn't matter, then I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the five bids and put it to legal and the airport to determine qualifications.
I agree.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Just want to confirm, it did say bid opening on the document, so...
Right.
It's really acceptance.
Yeah, because requests for qualifications don't always have the amount of money put there, because they have to qualify for it, and then you can negotiate after that.
So... All righty, on to item 13, lease termination, AAL-2003-070, a hangar sale, Edward Lowery, and with the airport, Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson for the record. If we could do 13 and 14 together, it is a hangar sale and purchase.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ed Lowery is selling his hangar. His lease number is AAL2003-070. It is a termination, and the purchaser, Northway Aviation LLC, ground lease, AAL2025-1000, excuse me, 100, is the purchaser. It's 5,400 square feet, private hangar space, and the annual revenue to the airport is $1,355.40.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the termination of the lease, AAL2003-070, Edward Lowery, and we approve the new ground lease, AAL2025-100. It's the hangar purchase to Northway Aviation LLC.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. That's items 13 and 14. Next up is item 15, lease addendum, AAL2021-1300, a lot decrease with Riley Creek, Montana LLC Airport, Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. Riley Creek, Montana LLC requested a lot decrease from their original 4.27 acres to three acres. This does leave the airport an additional lot to lease out off of Gulf Stream Road, and the annual revenue is still $27,573.48.
And this is not related to the next item?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve lease addendum, AAL2021-1300, which is the lot decrease with Riley Creek, Montana LLC.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 16, consent to assignment of lease, AAL2021-1400, assignment with North Idaho Hangar Group LLC. This is with the airport, and Ms. Stevenson again.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. North Idaho Hangar Group LLC has a multi-unit complex on the north side. They would like to assign their lease to a related entity, North Idaho Hangars Association Incorporated.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the assignment of lease, AAL2021-1400, to North Idaho Hangars Association, Inc.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 17, financial budget. This is a purchase approval for the Ramsey Pit Overlay Project with solid waste, and we have our Director John Phillips.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips for the record. The solid waste department is requesting your approval to move forward with the repair and maintenance of the asphalt floor in the Ramsey Pit area of the transfer station. That's the high wear area where the loader loads garbage directly into the tops of the trailers. If approved, the solid waste department would perform the demolition of the old floor, and then cordialane paving would tack and repave the area. The total bid price for the project was quoted at $28,440.40, but that price did note that it was dependent on the oil market. So because of this, the department is requesting authorization to spend up to $35,000 for this job. We did budget funds to cover these costs in FY '25.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Ramsey Pit Overlay Project not to exceed 35,000.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 18, County Department Annual Report, Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections, juvenile probation, and J Storm.
Yes, in our packet.
Good afternoon, J Storm or JD Storm for the record. So in front of you, we have the Cooten County Annual Juvenile Justice Report. If you just want to turn the first page, and the second page says youth arrests. So what this page does is just reflects a breakdown of arrests and petitions for the past three years and the type of charge. So you can see youth arrests in 2024, 691. That's down 111 arrests compared to 2023. Looking at detention admissions, you see 377 admissions. That's up 26 compared to last year. And as far as detention admissions, that's specifically for Cooten County juveniles. It doesn't show like if juveniles come from Shoshone or Benewah County or kids from out of state. So that's just Cooten County numbers specifically. If you look at youth petitions, it's 311. That's down 28 compared to last year. Looking at the graphs down below, it talks about the charges filed in Cooten County in 2024 and a breakdown of those charges. So in 2024, there were 89 felonies. That's up 10 compared to last year. The misdemeanor numbers, 428, up 3 compared to last year. And then status offenses, down 2 compared to last year at 19. But just to talk about the felony numbers, what we're seeing across the state is felony numbers are going up, so more serious crimes are being committed by juveniles, more high-risk behavior, so. Next page is probation and diversion, so this just shows a comparison between releases and intakes and the success rate of each program. So you can see in 2024, there were 279 releases and 368 intakes. For diversion, there were 344 releases compared to 282 intakes. Probation success rate for 2024 was 99%. Diversion success rate for 2024 was 70%. And if you guys have any questions as I'm running through these numbers, just let me know.
You could maybe just define what diversion success is.
For diversion, I'm Lonnie Whitman for the record, juvenile probation. I can't speak specifically to diversion, that's a separate department. As far as probation success rate, the way that's been described to me is if a probationer is unsuccessful, it means they serve out their time in their case, and the case is closed, they're no longer on probation. So that does not count revocations. Revocations, it gives that juvenile another chance to be dispositioned out and to have a second chance on probation. So that's my understanding of the success rate.
As far as diversion goes, it's usually a kid that is like a first-time offender. They get a chance to kind of right their wrong before being placed on formal probation. So if they complete diversion correctly or appropriately, then, you know, they're done, and they don't have to go on probation.
Okay. And then the only other thing that just kind of stood out, and this is compared to last year...
Yeah.
Was that felony charges went down, but misdemeanor charges went up between 22 and 23. And now we have misdemeanor and felony seeming to kind of track together a little bit more, even though it's only a couple extra misdemeanors. So are we actually getting that many more serious felonies that are actually being charged as felonies? Or are we now charging felonies correctly and not undercharging the crimes?
What do you think, Lonnie?
That one's hard. It could actually go both ways. We do have some cases that come through the courts that are pled down to misdemeanors from felonies. We do see that, and that's at the prosecutorial level. As far as what we're seeing at probation, that misdemeanor, that always stays pretty steady, consistent. We always have those. It's typically our 14, 16-year-old youth, and they're committing a lot of those misdemeanors. A lot of those are disturbing the peace, malicious injury to property, possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of controlled substance. Those are our main crimes or misdemeanors that we see coming through. As far as the felonies go, you know, we, of course, we see some more substance issues coming through, and there are some more violent crimes coming through. Again, I'm sure you're aware of kids, you know, getting into cars, getting guns, that sort of thing. But pretty consistent across the board on misdemeanors.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, thank you.
The next page talks about, we already went over that, intake. So this is just an overview of the area's average youth offender. 14 to 16-year-old white males are the average of probationers that come on intake. As you can see at race, at point of intake, 83% white, that's pretty consistent for Cooten County and Idaho, basically. Age at point of intake, C 14 to 16, at 57%, making up the bulk of numbers. And I can't remember Cooten County's numbers last year as far as 11 to 13-year-olds. I'm pretty sure it went up. I'm just making a point to say that in Region 1 and 2, and then across the state, we're seeing younger kids getting in trouble for that 11 to 13-year-old range. So just riskier behavior of kids being in junior high, getting in trouble. Gender at the point of intake, you see 34% female and 66% male. Again, that's a number, that's pretty consistent for Cooten County, but what we're seeing as a trend in Idaho is that there's more females getting in trouble. It's more of a statewide, it's more of a 60-40 split, where it used to be, you know, 75-25 was pretty... So more females are getting in trouble, at least in 2024, and I expect it will be a trend that continues.
Which I can just point out that in our jail population, it's like 21, 22% female and the rest male. So it's kind of odd that the juvenile population would have that more females.
Teenagers, maybe?
Well, yeah, it's just been an interesting trend since COVID, coming out of COVID. There's just seemed to be more females getting in trouble. So I would expect that those jail numbers, once they become adults, that it might be more of a split of a 65, 35 type of thing. I mean, just kind of predicting, but I think that's just kind of a trend, yeah. So the next page, it says September 30 snapshot, so we're just looking at numbers specifically for September 30, 2024. So you can see youth on probation, there were 215 on that day for Cooten County. Youth on diversion, there were 138. And then as far as kids committed to the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections, there were 13. Currently, Cooten County has 15 kids committed as of today.
Just real quick, I take it the probation numbers are lagging, meaning that they went down in '24, but a lot of those arrests and charges were probably in '23, and then they got onto a probation?
Yeah, that would be my guess, yeah.
Because your numbers are going up a little bit for between '23 and '24 as far as misdemeanor and felony, but your probation and diversion seem to have dropped, so I'm assuming that it's 23 events that are showing up on the '24 stats.
Yes.
Okay.
And then down below, it talks about community service hours completed. So there were 1,304 community service hours completed, and $20,819 were paid directly to the victims as far as restitution goes. Then the next graph or next bar talks about percentage of youth who recidivated at six, 12, and 24 months. So at the six-month mark, there was a 4% recidivism rate. 12-month was 9%, and 24-month was 14%. And what that means as far as recidivate means that the juvenile was adjudicated or convicted of a new crime after getting off of probation. So these numbers, 4, 9, and 14%, are really good. They're lower than the state average and definitely lower than the national average, so. And then the last page talks about state funds. So this is just talking about the state funds received from the legislature and funds spent on juvenile treatment in the community, and the percentage of juvenile justice budget these state funds make up. So as far as for, these are passed-down funds that are passed down into Cooten County's budget. So you can see the juvenile, the JCA, the Juvenile Corrections Act Fund, 242,984 was passed down to Cooten County. Tobacco and cigarette tax, 367, 126 dollars were passed down, and then lottery, 71,832 was passed down. And this goes right into Cooten County's budget, makes a part of their budget. And the next spot there is State Behavioral Health Fund spent on juvenile treatment in the community. So you can see that there's $126,588 that were spent on youth with substance youth disorder. And they, it looks like 69 youth were served. And then for the CBAS expenditure, which is community-based alternative, so mental health issues, 75,692 was spent by Cooten County with 31 youth being served.
I think that's 81, and then 112 on the other one, so...
That's what's in our report.
What's that?
112 and 81 is in our report.
Yeah. It's very tiny. Very tiny.
On what section was that, Commissioner?
So when he was talking about the legislative pass-through funds, that's like the maroon, magenta color. Then the blue, underneath the blue, it says 112 youth served and 81 youth served.
Yeah. I'd say 69 and 31.
Oh, I like my numbers better.
Yeah, I do, too. Then the next section just talks about the percentage of the juvenile justice budget that those pass-through funds make up of Cooten County's budget, which is 29% for 2024, which is, as you can see, pretty steady for the last three years, so. That is it. Just want to say that Cooten County is lucky to have probation department that they have for juveniles, diversion program, and then their detention program is great, well-respected. I, my territory is from, you know, Idaho County, so Grangeville up to the Canadian border, so I think all the administrators for those three programs do really well, and they have really awesome staff, so.
Questions?
Nope.
No. My only question is, do you feel like we're really making a difference?
I feel like we are. I mean, it's a...
I mean, you know...
Sometimes it doesn't feel that way, but...
We're growing, too, so we have to look at... I mean, the numbers don't really tell the whole story, but, you know, it's... I like this area in the sense that the money that we invest hopefully will save us money in the long run on the justice system, the adult justice system. And so that's why I ask if, you know, do you really feel like we're making progress with people, even though your numbers might be going up because of the growth?
I think we are. Lonnie might be able to, it's her county, but I think the biggest thing is just finding quality services for kids. Because I work for the state, I don't want kids to get committed to the state for long term. I want to keep them in the community. But it's just hard to find good, consistent treatment.
So mentor programs, things like that can make a difference?
Yes.
Absolutely. Mentor programs, mental health treatment in the community, we see, you know, I know wait lists, they go in waves. Sometimes the wait lists are super long, and that's how it's been for the past several months for a lot of these kids getting into services. That seems to be remedying a little bit. There's been a couple of new providers popping up, so that's been very helpful on the strain to the services in the community. So we have great probation officers, we have POs that go above and beyond to help these kids, whatever they need within reason, what we can provide them for support. And so I think we do a great job. We have a lot of programs that are free to the taxpayer, they're free to the families. It's huge for these kids that fill that gap that they have and that can't be met anywhere else. And so when a kid does come onto probation, I feel like many times, 100% almost of the time, it is typically in their best interest to get them the help that they need. And sometimes it's unfortunate that these kids aren't caught at a younger age, and so, you know, we're just doing our best to catch them earlier so that they don't continue to go through the system and end up at the state level, so.
Well, and they're also living in environments that are enabling with their parents a lot of times.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. So that makes it even harder. Well, thank you. I think you guys do a great job. So I take it we're going to need a motion to accept this, so...
Yep. So I move that we accept the annual report from the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Could we get the door closed out? Thank you. Second.
Did you get everybody?
I think I did.
Okay.
I didn't say aye.
You didn't say aye.
Yeah, so I think you're on Commissioner Duncan.
Okay.
You got Commissioner Everline.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I said yes. Yeah.
Yes, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next up, thank you so much. Next up is item 19, Board Approval Request, Final Payment for the Transport Van. This is with the Sheriff's Office at the jail, and we have Sergeant Jonathan Morton here with us.
Good afternoon, Sergeant Jonathan Morton, Cooten County Jail, for the record. The original quote that we got back in February 2023, which was approved for the 2024 budget was $194,547. When we received the final invoice for the vehicle, it came back with the options at We were able to adjust through budget for that increase, but one of the difficulties we had was the camera system in the vehicle was not compatible with ours, and so we had to order a Motorola-compatible camera system for the transport vehicle. So that ended up being $6,909. Captain Hile spoke with Grant Kinsey from IT. Grant Kinsey was also able to allocate funds. Kinsey was also able to allocate funds in their camera fund. And so we're seeking for approval from the board to move those funds to adjust for that, make it a budget neutral.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Probably just from Auditor's Office. Has IT and the jail talked about this with you?
I haven't talked with IT, so I can contact Grant after this and make sure he's good with that and transfer, I don't know what money he's talking about, but I'll just move whatever he's talking about into the jail's budget.
Right. Because I, I thought that the overage was going to come from one of your maintenance line items that.
There were the overages on just from that initial, from the one ninety-four to the one ninety-seven that they were able to allocate from the maintenance.
Okay.
But then when Captain Heil spoke with Grant, Grant said he was able to find money in their camera fund to make up that difference for that camera system that we had to purchase.
Okay, so that's separate than what we're approving today, then, it sounds like.
Well, the, they've already spent the money on the cameras, so now they don't have enough left to pay the final invoice for the van.
Correct.
So if you approve the final payment for the van, I guess we'll talk to Grant and ask if he's okay with us using his budget for the cameras.
So you're saying that money needs to come from Grant and from your maintenance line item? Both?
I believe the money was, yes, I believe that is correct, that the overage, the initial overage from the one ninety-four to the one ninety-seven was from the maintenance, that that needs to be moved over.
Okay. So the camera sounds like it's a separate issue.
So the, the camera was, had to be purchased prior, and it was purchased out of the vehicle's budget, so it could be installed before it was all put together. And so then the camera system was essentially, it'd be moving twice, I suppose, one from the maintenance fund and then one from the camera fund from IT.
Sounds like we just need to know the dollar amounts, but it shouldn't be a problem. You know, what, what dollar amount is coming from the IT department?
Correct. So the, the difference from the one ninety-four is twenty-four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And that's coming from the?
I believe that was from the maintenance.
From the maintenance, okay. So we need to approve the, the maintenance transfer, and then we can approve the purchase.
Okay, because I don't think I have the purchase documents, the camera documents. So that's, that's what I was missing.
That was already paid, that was already paid a while ago.
That was paid prior, not part of this invoice. And then it was brought in to be installed while they were making it, which is.
Correct. But today, the information we have to do that today was just the final payment of the transport van coming from the maintenance line item.
And then we have the, I guess, the question is, do we want to pull the money from the maintenance side to approve this today, or do you want to bring this back?
So if you want to approve the final, the payment for the van, with the understanding that the budget overage caused by the purchase of the cameras will be covered by IT's budget, that would work for us, if that's okay with you.
Okay, so then we don't need the maintenance line item. Is that what I'm, I'm hearing two different things right now, I guess, so.
I have the maintenance line item before this, so.
Okay.
I, I just know it was taken out somewhere in the general budget. They were able to get the money somewhere in the general budget for the difference of that, one ninety-four to one eighty-seven.
Right. That's what I spoke to Captain Heil about, and he said it was from the maintenance line item. So I don't, I don't know anything about a camera and the overage from the camera.
I think the camera is a separate issue.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So I'm happy to do the van today with the maintenance line item and then bring the camera back to us later, which I don't even know we need to bring the camera back because it's probably underneath the amount and IT, if they've already.
It's already been paid for, so it used up money that was supposed to be for the van. So now when they pay for the van, they're going to show us over budget. Does that make sense? Because the camera was already paid for, it was like six thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's six thousand.
So now there's not enough money left to pay for the van. So in approving payment for the van, you're knowing it's going to go over budget, and are you okay with that over budget being covered by IT's budget for the camera?
Yeah, so we're talking, it's going more than the three thousand or the twenty-four seventy-five.
It's going to be about six to seven thousand over budget after they pay for the van.
Okay. So again, that's what we're just talking about, two separate overages.
Yeah. Now, I thought I had it here, but now it sounds like we, we allocated the hundred ninety-four thousand, five forty-seven for the van, six thousand plus was spent for the camera. So you're actually down to a hundred eighty-nine thousand in the budget. And we need to offset that with the hundred ninety-seven thousand that the van actually cost. So that means we need eight thousand plus six thousand to go back into the budget. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. I don't think that's not what I intended to communicate, but in my defense, I thought I had cleared it with Stephanie, that the only thing needed was the money for the cameras. So I wasn't aware of this maintenance issue before this meeting. So do you want us to bring it back? Do you want to approve the van purchase today, and we can deal with the over budget issue at a separate agenda item?
I, I would like to do that only because I don't want to let brawn hang in the wind and without payment.
So if we just approve the purchase of the invoice for the van, knowing it will go over budget, and we'll deal with the over budget situation at another agenda item next week.
That, that works for me.
Mine.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the final payment for the transport van with the Sheriff's Office Jail, knowing that we will apply funding next week for that overage.
Aye.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item twenty, Board Approval Request. This is an invoice payment approval per Policy nine thirty, absentee ballot envelopes and secrecy sleeves with K&amp;H Integrated Print Solutions, Elections, and we have our Elections Manager, Asa Gray.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Asa Gray for the record. Before you today is a request to pay this invoice for the envelopes and the secrecy sleeves that are used in the absentee ballot mailing. Specifically, we're ordering these in advance of the May and November elections for this year. And the good news about this is because they aren't election-specific, we are able to utilize anything that is left over up until about a year is about their lifespan at the warehouse where they're stored from our mailing partners.
So this does not include anything for the November twenty-five election?
So we order these in advance and we use them for May, and anything that is left over, we can put towards November.
Okay. Right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't ordering extra for November.
No, no.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the invoice payment per Policy nine thirty for the absentee ballot envelopes and secrecy sleeves with K&amp;H Integrated Print Solutions.
I concur.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item twenty-one, Resolution two zero two five dash two zero, Establishment of Updated Elections Precincts. This is with Elections and Asa Gray again.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Before you today is a resolution to establish the updated election voting precinct boundaries. These were presented to you last Thursday in our meeting, and there is a map in your packet that shows the countywide new boundaries. Again, just to briefly mention what was talked about last week, we are seeking to create a new precinct two zero nine from portions of precinct two zero two and two zero three. We're seeking to adjust some boundaries between precincts three zero two, three zero three, and three eleven. And we're seeking to adjust boundaries between precincts five nineteen and five twenty, and then also to dissolve precinct five twenty-three back into precinct five thirteen where it was originally removed from.
Thank you. Questions?
Probably just a statement. I know that we had a few people reach out to us and express their displeasure, I suppose, at us doing it at this time and the way we're doing it. And I, I find that the process that the Elections Manager goes along with the GIS Manager, that I think they do a very fair job of looking at taxing district boundaries, looking at population in precincts, and doing that. We can never, ever make everyone happy and just wait till a little bit later in this meeting. So, yes, with that, even though we've had some people who are, you know, expressed concerns, I didn't find anything rising to the level where we'd make you go back to the drawing board. I, I feel like it was done fairly and in looking out for the future.
Commissioner Eberlein? Do you have any comments? No, I, I agree with what Commissioner Duncan said and the fact that you also are streamlining the process. You're cleaning up the different jurisdictions so that you don't have so many multiple different types of ballots being handed out at the same precinct location. And that's important, too. So idea, things that mitigate the likelihood of an error are important. So I think it's a good thing. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution two zero two five dash two zero, which is the establishment of the updated election precincts for elections.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item twenty-two, County Department Annual Report, the Board of Community Guardians per Idaho Code one five dash five dash six zero three A with the B O C C, and we have Chair Dave Levine.
Right. First, Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for your past support in helping us accommodate people in need. Today, we have several agenda items. Items twenty-two and twenty-three really are independent of each other. The first one is a review and acceptance of our annual report that we provided. And the second one is approval to continue the Board of Community Guardians for another year. The information in the report is pretty much standard, what we provide each year. The only thing I did want to highlight is the number of applications to the court is going up. While we did six last year, and that number itself may not sound very much, it's a fifty percent increase from the previous three or four years. So we're getting more people who need our help. And what makes it even more difficult, the people we are getting are, have very little financial resources. It's a combination of two things. We're getting people in need, but they are in dire financial straits. All our, all our awards are on Medicaid, so best-case scenario, they have less than two thousand dollars on that. So we did ask for an increase. I know you'll approve the budget later on. We did ask for an increase in the budget from twenty-five to thirty thousand. The trend of having six a year is continuing. We've already had three this year, and we have another one pending next week. So this trend is troublesome. But as you know, we always manage our money, or a hundred percent of our money goes to the support of the individuals. There's no really overhead for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions and hope that you will accept the report and, more importantly, approve the continuation of the Board of Community Guardians for another year.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Just one question and probably one comment. If for some reason the board was unable to increase the amount, would you still be able to function?
Well, what we would do is, we'd have to come back and ask first if you would increase the, give us money from, after the budget is closed, which is very difficult to do. And if we actually ran out of funds, what we would do is stop taking new applications. We would only accommodate the needs of the people we have under our overview. And I think, you know, and that's the best way to approach it, because you cannot, we, most of our expenses, once we get the applications approved, is really for case management. And that number is pretty much flat year in and year out. It's really these legal costs and visitors' reports and all the requirements for guardianship that is driving it. We are trying some other things to try to minimize the cost and trying to recoup some of the funds, but that, right now, is unclear.
I just want to say thank you and.
Say thank you and appreciate your hard work. You guys are a working board for the most vulnerable population.
Thank you. I'll bring that back to the board.
Yeah. And I echo Commissioner Duncan's comments, and you especially, Chair Levine, because you've been doing this for a long time.
Yeah.
And I think the board very much appreciates.
I will say, it's, of all the advisory boards, and you know, I've been on a few, this is definitely the most rewarding.
Yeah.
Board I'm on, because you're giving back to the people that need our help. And you are supporting us and giving us the ability to do that, which we very much appreciate.
And these are people who really can't make decisions for themselves anymore, and so it's to help set up the legal structure.
Yep.
Necessary so that people can make good decisions for them.
Right.
Oftentimes in their very ending twilight years.
Yeah, and we even have younger folks in thirties who have cognitive impairments and nobody to take care of them. Their parents have died, and they're out there. So, you know, we have very strict requirements. It has to be cognitive, long-term, permanent, no family members, with a last resort. We only do this when there is no other option available to us.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
So it's two separate motions. So we'll go through the first one, which I move that we approve and accept the annual report for the Board of Community Guardians per Idaho Code one five dash five dash six oh three A.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I move, per Idaho Code one five dash five dash six oh three B, the annual determination whether to dissolve or continue the Board of Community Guardians, that the Cootney County Board of Commissioners continue the Board of Community Guardians.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. We have two other agenda items, and I ask that you approve the resolutions for the clarification and destruction of our records that have no longer required to maintain.
Yeah. And what I'll do is, I'll just read in both of those items, and then we'll just do a motion for both. So items twenty-four and twenty-five are resolutions two zero two five dash two one to classify records from the Board of Community Guardian, and Resolution two zero two five dash two two is to destroy those records from the Board of Community Guardian. And unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution numbers two zero two five dash twenty-one and dash twenty-two, which is the classification and destruction of records of specifically Board of Community Guardian records per Idaho Code.
Aye.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries. That's items twenty-four and twenty-five. Thank you so much. Next up, item twenty-six, Resolution two zero two five dash two three. This is data center building permit moratorium with community development. And I have Pat Braden from our Civil Division and David Callahan, Director of Community Development. Who would like to start the show here?
Mr. Chair, I'll start. Pat's worked up the legal document that memorializes your decision from last Thursday to approve a moratorium. I think the document speaks for itself, but we're here for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
It was actually approved on February twenty-seventh, and the resolution would be retroactive to that date.
Okay, thank you. If there's no questions, we'll take a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution two zero two five dash twenty-three, which is the data center building permit moratorium effective February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Next up, item twenty-seven, Board Approval Request. This is amendment to software contract quote, ALPR Software with Motorola and the Sheriff's Office, and we have Lieutenant Eric Hudlin with us. Hudlin.
Lieutenant Eric Hudlin, for the record. Good afternoon, Commissioners. December twenty-third of last year, the B O C C approved the terms of the ALPR Contract License Late Reader Agreement with Motorola, with the stipulations that rather than the standard five-year contract, it would be a one-year contract with Motorola, that it would be subject to legal, legal review, and that Motorola would sign the compliance for prohibition against contracts with China paperwork. All of those requests have been completed. It is now written up as a one-year contract. Legal review has been done by Darren Murphy, and the paperwork has been signed and submitted, referenced the China, the not working with China in the contract agreement, excuse me. Darren Murphy, actually, when he approved it, for, in his legal review, said he didn't have any problems with the quote. He said the quote, according to him, did not need additional approval from the B O C C, but instead needed to be placed on the consent calendar and signed by the chair. I requested that and got to make the business meeting portion as well anyway today. So all the paperwork is there. It's been submitted to the board. I will say with the one-year agreement or the contract. I will say with the one-year agreement or the contract, shall I say, I think one of the points brought up by the Commissioners kind of addresses the concern from public comment earlier in that the intention there was to have a one-year contract so that at the end of that one year, the sheriff could present any success stories, give the opportunity for audits, obviously looking for any abuse, which I'm very confident there won't be. There was also concerns over retention period for data that's collected. Originally, it was agreed to be a one-year retention for data that's collected. Conversations very recently that both Under Sheriff Nelson and Sheriff Norris agree with. On their behalf, we were reducing that number to 30 days for retention for our license plate data to really kind of limit that portion of the data collection and storage, which will help with shorter-term investigations. But more importantly, that immediate data, which is critical to, I believe, officer safety and that it's alerting our deputies on the streets to any vehicles in their proximity that may be related to dangerous felons or also missing persons and such. So, it's all been presented to you. The data has, as it is, and I think, are there any other questions? Certainly try and field those for you.
Thank you. Questions?
Oh.
I do. How long has this thing been in action?
License plate readers?
Yes.
In the county?
Yes.
To my knowledge, I believe it's been quoted by the sheriff. We researched it to be 16 years. Those license plate readers were not ours. They're license plate readers that either post-falls or other entities had fixed license plate readers at various locations around the county. The sheriff's office had access to them, but no control over those readers or the data that they produced.
I'm not particularly a fan of them. I, I look at it as a surveillance state.
And I can understand that. The...
On the, on the other hand, they are, they can be useful, but I still lean towards surveillance state.
Commissioner, and I totally understand that. Believe me, I'm very much constitutional conservative myself. The data that's collected, though, is simply the data from that license plate. It's not like addresses, any identifying information about the public. It's simply that state-issued or county-issued license plate that's collected at that time.
Yeah, if I could also just add something, too. You know, I share Commissioner Everline's concern, and I presume, Commissioner Duncan, you feel the same way on a lot of this stuff. The fixed license plate readers that are at an intersection, those track when you go through that intersection every time. That's how you build a profile on someone, their patterns. What we're talking about here is basically taking the cameras that are, already exist on the patrol cars, updating the software. And that way, you could have your license plate read at Kathleen and 95 with that patrol car that one time you go through that intersection. But you could go through that intersection 100 more times and it would never be logged. And that's the difference between the stationary ones and the mobile ones. And it's much more difficult to develop patterns on people. And I agree with you. And there's actually a case in Virginia where a city deployed like 200 of these cameras throughout the city. And the judge actually said that it does constitute a violation of one's privacy because in effect, you could not travel in that city without being continuously monitored. Here, it's a little different. I would actually like to see the stationary ones move and give the patrol cars what they need so that way, if they come across a missing person, a dangerous person, they know, they can call in backup and they can apprehend or save that person. As opposed to looking at the stationary ones and seeing three days ago, your suspect drove through Kathleen and 95, for example.
And to Chair Matar's point, the function I see for these is we have, and we've had some of these already recently, that they could have been used. But a critical incident, be it a homicide, an armed robbery, those sorts of things, we had an armed robbery at a gas station. And fortunately, we, we were, we got lucky essentially with the ability to use certain other investigative tools. But as those responding deputies are going to that scene, there is that potential for them to catch that fleeing suspect vehicle on those readers without even knowing who their suspect is at that point. It's a short-term data collection point for them to see license plates of possible suspect vehicles and then in turn be able to potentially identify that suspect. Again, with a shorter retention period, I think that helps as far as that longer-term data collection. That data is purged and no longer in the system for, for anybody to, to access.
In our constitution, it works as we give all the favors to the people. And we don't, we don't want to tromp on any of their rights.
That's correct.
And so, that's, that's the dangers of it and the power of it.
Sure.
And so, I'm, I'm afraid of all this kind of stuff.
I understand. I understand. There's been a, there's been...
You know, it's my, it's kind of funny. My, my parent, my, my great-great-great-grandparents, they started off in the Revolutionary War, but all the way through every single solitary war that we've been in. And that was for freedom. And that's, and that's what I want to preserve. And so, I, I go on the side of safety.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Duncan, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Sure. So, obviously, this has been very much angst-ridden for me because, again, I do very much value freedom for our constituents. I think that there are some good points to this where, you know, with the missing persons and the, the red tags. So, my preference would be to, to have zero data collection, right? It's just something that if it pops up, that's great. If that's not something that the Sheriff's Department can agree with, then I'm willing to try the 30 days for that one-year period. And then, can you send us the audits verifying the purging of the data every 30 days?
I know that, per our discussions with Motorola, there is an automatic purge every 30 days of, you can set it to whatever you want.
Right.
Zero to indefinite. I would have to look into the specifics as to how it verifies to you that the data is purged because presumably, once it's gone, it's gone. But I would, I could look into that to see if there's a specific marker for that. Other than I know that you just, you set it to a setting and then if you, if you... I would put it to you this way. If you, if you searched a plate that's, and you were searching 30 days back, presumably, it should give you zero results. I think that would be the best way to potentially audit that and to show that there was nothing tracked prior to that. If that makes sense?
And then I, I'm just, again, I'm not really sold on this. I want to see the return on investment. I want the benefit proven. In the grand scheme of things, 23,000 is not that much, except we know that we got this transport van and, you know, other things, jail medical and, and that kind of stuff that, that does that. But I am willing to go with a 30-day retention and just see that one-year results if that's, if that works out.
But we've had, we've had discussions already about the best ways to capture results and if you want to call them success stories or ways that the, the readers have been used to benefit the community. And truly, that balance is, obviously, our personal freedoms are very important. We also want to protect the people within our community. And if we can catch the people that are assaulting and committing crimes against our citizens, there is also extreme value in that as well. And so, that's that fine line we walk, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to just say one other thing that, you know, when this first came out in the budget last year, I think I called the undersheriff and I was like, you guys got to pull this from the budget because this is not something that the community is going to be very receptive to. And I spoke with a number of deputies and they made a very compelling case how this can, you know, make a difference on the law enforcement side. There's a balance, of course, on the community side. And Commissioner Everline expressed that pretty well, too. The one thing that I think is important is that if we're going to make a decision, we should try to make decisions with data. And that's where I was willing and open to the idea of a one-year test. And let the sheriff's office make the case to the community that this is something that, one, really does save people's lives. And, two, that it is guarded in such a way that it is virtually impossible for it to ever infringe or be abused towards, you know, law-abiding citizens. And give them that one year and let them make the case and let the community have a say on this one. And so, I'm okay with that. In fact, I'm glad that we even have a retention policy. There was no retention policy whatsoever at the sheriff's office. So, you know, these are the kind of things that should have been put in place, I think, years ago. But now that we're getting to it, so that's good.
Well, the years ago couldn't have happened because it's not our data for the stuff that we've had for 16 years in the community. It's not our data to control with the sheriff's office, unfortunately. But, and there are success stories. Obviously, we can't present them to you because we've not been... Well, I take that back. We can't give you success stories from the, the mobile readers. We did provide some success stories. I believe they were outlined at the town hall, including local cases where crimes were solved using the readers. There's been nationally quite a few of those, all the way from, you know, property crimes to one of the attempted Trump assassins. And as far as the abuse of such, to my knowledge, I've, I've only been able to in research find one case that was brought up in, in a jurisdiction Midwest, I'd like to say. Don't quote me on it. And that was a personal misuse by a single, a single officer. He was located and addressed and it was corrected very swiftly, truthfully. So, to have as much, as many of these out there as there are, that's not to say there haven't been abuses that have been gone unnoticed, but to have as many of these out here as there are and to have that singular case, to my knowledge, I would believe that had there been more cases, they would have been very highly publicized, especially in our current climate. And the fact that there have been, again, this is all anecdotal at this point, but the successes that I've seen have been many and very minimal in the abuse. And certainly at our level, I would like to believe that we are going to be very strict and obviously aware within our community and our sheriff's office about any attempts at abuse.
Well, hopefully, this sets the stage for the locals' jurisdictions. That, you know, the, all the other patrol cars and a lot of the other local jurisdictions, they are already outfitted with this technology. And so, I think this board is very clear on what, what it wants from the sheriff's office. And so, we hope that you do that, present a good case a year from now. But it doesn't stop with the county. It, it really begins with the county because of all the other cities that already have this technology.
And another, and another glance of truth and happiness that we might be able to have is Donald J. Trump. And so, can he do anything about it? Let's see what he can do.
He's certainly reviewing quite a, quite a few things at this point, so see if this crosses his plate. And you know that there's been case law.
Wouldn't surprise me. I think he's, he's been over there. Yeah.
Not close enough to see the work going on, but...
Well.
To the sheriff's point, there has been...
There's a lot to do.
There has been case law. Most of the case law to this point has suggested that license plates in and of themselves being collected are, it's not a Fourth Amendment violation. That's been the interpretation of the Supreme Court thus far. The surveillance from that particular Virginia city was a different application of the readers. But again, that's been the interpretation of the Supreme Court to this point is that the collecting of the plates themselves is not. Now, can that change? Absolutely. And obviously, if it does, we will need to readdress our usage of that.
The Supreme Court, I don't trust them as far as I can spit.
I understand that.
Except for a couple guys.
I understand it.
Well, unless there's anything else, we'll take, want to make a motion?
Yeah, I just, again, want to reiterate that, I mean, this is not my first choice, for sure. I would rather no data be collected. I think that it would be, it'll be interesting to see how much return on investment that we are able to get, how many plates and people we're able to turn over. And I just very much expect it's a good policy and I expect the Sheriff's Department will adhere to it faithfully. And with that 30-day retention change, so, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I move that we approve the amendment to the software contract quote with the ALPR software.
Do I have a second?
No, you don't.
Second. With the understanding that if we decide a year from now, there is no value for data retention after day zero, we can make that adjustment, you know? We can not fund it for the following year if there's not a good enough case being made, so...
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Everline?
Nay.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matar?
Aye. Motion carries.
And I hope you get her all done, too. I'm really glad that you're there and keep trying and fix it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you.
That concludes the business. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Anybody on the line? 3:04, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.